Do that.
We are recording, Your Honor.
All righty, so Council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
It's Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Doll.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Finbres.
Here.
Mr. Kazachik.
Here.
Merrill Merrill.
Here. Item two.
Report an update relating to January 27, 2022, meeting of the Regional Council of the Pima Association of Governments, PAG, Regional Transportation Authority, RTA Board.
City Manager's Communication Number 33, dated February 1, is received into and made part of the record. This time is scheduled to allow members of the Mayor and Council to receive an update and discuss the matters from the Regional Council of the Pima Association of Governments, Regional Transportation Authority Board Meeting, held January 27, 2022. And I just wanted to start up this item. Giving you an update of the PAG RTA Board Meeting. As you all well know, we have been working diligently to, for quite some time, to make sure there was positive movement and movement of the status quo at the PAG RTA in areas that were very important, that are very important to the city of Tucson and its mayor and council. I'm grateful for the guidance and support of this council as I went to represent the city of Tucson at the PAG RTA Boards. I was very pleased at the January 27 meeting, which was last Thursday, that there was support for the PAG RTA Board to move forward with a proposal put at the table by General Maxwell, including my friendly amendment to continue exploring the possibilities of a MAG model, as well as introduce a 360 evaluation for the PAG RTA Executive Director. This is tangible movement forward. And in terms of representation in our citizens advisory committees and our technical management committees and in the CART, I feel as though the status quo is no more, that there's forward movement. And this is some, and there's very important answers and a blueprint to move forward when it comes to the projects, the RTA projects of the city of Tucson. So what I'd like to do is allow the city manager to give an update. I want to thank the city manager for his and his team's support in in this year and a half of the city of Tucson, its mayor and council asking questions about the equity issues and the gaps in funding at RTAs. So, Mr. Manager, please, which by the way, I want to thank again because Mr. Ortega is with me at the PAG RTA meetings. And for the 27th meeting, our city attorney, Mr. Rankin, was there as well. And so the city was well represented and I felt absolutely supported by our team. So, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I start, I did pop a cough drop in my mouth, so I'm not trying to be disrespectful by chewing on something, but I figured it might help me keep from coughing. So, Mayor and members of the council, first of all, I think I need to echo the leadership that you all have demonstrated. Mayor, I thought that you kept your cool under some interesting comments that were made during the RTA meeting, which ultimately led to a motion from Mr. Maxwell. As you know, Ted Maxwell is the, I think, president and CEO of the Southern Arizona Leadership Council, and rightfully so, as he demonstrated tremendous leadership in, in my opinion, salvaging the RTA going forward. So, Mayor, what I'll do is very quickly give you a summary of the motion so that you understand the pieces that we took away from it. This did come directly from Mr. Maxwell's motion, but I am going to summarize it. So when you see the final minutes from the RTA, it might be a little more detailed. So first of all, increasing the city Tucson representation on the citizens advisory committee, adding another city resident as a member of the technical management committee, identifying the RTA's plan to complete the unfinished projects of the original RTA plan. By the way, that's a big issue for us because most of those unfinished projects are city of Tucson projects. Defining defining the specifics of how any original RTA project will be addressed if they are moved into our proposed RTA next. Requiring the determination of the combination, excuse me, the composition of the citizens accountability for regional transportation, that's CART, in advance of any approval of the RTA next plan to include considering an increase in the number of members appointed by the city by two and by Pima County by one. Directing the CAC to include within the RTA next plan, a system for regular periodic reviews every five or 10 years of projects to evaluate the feasibility and/or need of remaining projects. And Mayor, as you mentioned, your friendly amendment was accepted, which is committing to ongoing discussions and exploration of the Maricopa Association of Governments or MAG voting model. The vote on that was unanimous from those presidents, I understand and recall. So I do think that that did show tremendous movement by the RTA mayor. Thank you.
Well, hearing that and the work that you all did to get us to that point, I think General Maxwell said it best that he really worked towards listening to the concerns that the city of Tucson and its mayor and council had. And he really addressed a lot of those concerns with his motion and by accepting our friendly amendment, we still have an opportunity for continued discussion on an equitable voting model that we will feel comfortable moving forward, especially for a potential RTA next ballot initiative that should be coming in the next couple of years. So with that forward movement and that positive movement forward, I would say that I would recommend we continue working with the RTA at this time and and keep our membership and our participation, especially with that work that we're doing. In the near future, we will, we will be, we will be in a very good place. So that is my recommendation, that we stay and that we continue working on an equitable voting model, as well as a good package with the input and feedback of a reconstituted Citizens Advisory Council. Any of my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Kazachik?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank all the staff and you as well for, frankly, for hanging in there. I agree that the addition of these citizens advisory committee members, now we have 18 out of eventually 35, there are still three vacant seats, so that gives the city a very strong voice. And as Ted said, he was, he heard loudly and clearly that it was our voice that was, we were concerned about. One of the reasons for those who may not have listened to the meeting, one of the reasons that we did not, or the mayor did not dig in on proportional representation at either the PAG or the RTA, was that each of those would have required involvement from either the state legislature or the governor. And so discretion being the better part of valor, if we can get our voice heard in a different way, which is what we're doing with the CAC, I think that's a good thing. The CAC is going to be the group that frames the next, the next package, or at least they'll make a recommendation to the RTA Board. The Technical Management Committee is the group that reviews projects, reviews funding, and the CART Committee is the citizens group that talks about scope changes, those kinds of things. And I also believe that the five-year relook is important because that's exactly what we should have had with Broadway, we are hoping to still have with First Avenue. The funding for me is still a huge issue. Between First Avenue and Grant Road, their own data shows that there's about $120 million of unfunded, unfunded work. And, you know, they, they, they appeared to agree to full funding and to put any, and to put any of the unfinished projects at the front of the line when RTA next winds up in front of the voters and not to count those projects against our chunk of the next RTA package. So I think that's really good, but I'm still concerned because I've seen far too much history with frankly, their executive director pushing back and trying to shift costs to us. So while I agree that the movement overall was positive, and I believe we should affirmatively vote to stick with the conversation and not pull out of the RTA next and continue the dialogue because they showed good faith. You know, frankly, I don't think we'd have gotten there if we hadn't drawn a line in the sand, the February 1 line in the sand. This had been, we'd still be having the conversation, but, but continuing the dialogue keeps us at the table. And until we see how the funding and the development of the RTA plays out, then I'm, you know, no one's going to say, yeah, we're all in and we're all going to run with pom poms down the street supporting the next package. But for now, let's stay at the table. So for, I know we've got two, two items on the table tonight, but I mean, just to make a motion to get this one out of the way and move that the mayor and council agree to not pull out of the RTA next conversation at this point and to continue the dialogue and stay engaged with that body.
And if I may add to your motion, Councilmember Kazachik, to make sure that we continue the conversation on the MAG model for for weighted voting. I think that's a very important piece, which I made a friendly amendment, it was actually also approved. So exploring the possibilities of a MAG model so that we can have continuous discussion on equitable representation.
Right, that was all part of the motion and I totally support the motion. I mean, their motion.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
So there's a motion in a second to continue working with the PAG RTA and continue working towards a RTA next package, as well as fair representation. And then approving all of the movement in terms of the motion that was done on January 27. So there's a motion in a second, any continued discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any against?
Aye, Your Honor.
You're an aye. Any against? Motion passes. Excellent work. Thank you all so much for your incredible support and work on this issue. We called this special meeting for two, two reasons. One, because we wanted to make a final call on our participation as a city of Tucson and PAG RTA. And the other reason is because this council has also been discussing, and actually we placed an item on the ballot, the May 2022 ballot, to talk about and reconsider a continuation of our half-sent sales tax, which expires in, at the end of June this year. One of the reasons that we wanted to have this discussion in the context of the PAG RTA is because we have to make a call based on the needs of our residents and what we have been planning for as a mayor and council, as a city team regarding our transportation and mobility future. And part of this discussion is moving on to item three, which is to discuss a possible language for a May 2022 election, which by the way, we've already placed as a mayor and council on the ballot. But tonight was the night that Roger Randolph told us we needed language to move forward and place on the ballot and then have all the time to be able to have the community have a discussion about it and of course, run an election. So I'm going to call item three. Mr. Clerk, can you read the heading, please?
Proposed May 2022 ballot question relating to an extension of the city's temporary transaction privilege tax rate previously approved by Tucson's voters in 2017, and allocating the revenues generated by the extended taxes for specifically authorized purposes and/or direction to reschedule the timing of submitting a ballot measure to the city's voters.
City Manager's Communication Number 34, dated February 1, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11904 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11904 relating to finance, transportation, public safety and elections, pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 1, Subsection 20, Chapter 16, Section 6, Chapter 20, Section 2 of the Tucson Charter specifying the ballot language for the special election to be held in the city of Tucson, Arizona on May 17, 2022, for the purpose of amending Chapter 4, Section 3 of the Tucson Charter to provide for the extension of a temporary transaction and use tax not exceeding a fixed percentage, limiting that extension to a fixed period of years, limiting the extension of the revenues generated by the temporary extension to specific authorized purposes, providing for truth in taxation and ongoing oversight of the tax revenues to ensure that they are expended for the authorized purposes and declaring an emergency.
So council, this is what I'm going to do. We will have Mr. Rankin clarify the language and what we have in front of us. And then, then we will go to Mr. Ortega to talk a little bit about the package that he and I have been talking about to put in front of the voters based on what we have been hearing from you all at this table, as well as the community and their needs and their wants. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll send it over to Mr. Rankin so that he could talk about what we have in front of us and what are the decisions that we have to make legally to clarify the language on our May 17 ballot. So, Mr. Rankin.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, as the mayor just explained, yes, tonight is the night. If the mayor and council's decision is in fact to proceed for a May 17 special election for the presentation of this ballot measure for the consideration by Tucson's voters. The materials that were provided to you in connection with tonight's item purposefully left certain blanks in the materials because those are the decisions you have to make tonight. And describe how you want those to read in the final materials. And those key components are, of course, the, the level of the tax, if it's going to be extended, the duration for the timeframe for the extension of the temporary sales tax, as well as a description of the purposes for which expenditures of the revenues can be made and the allocation of the revenues between those purposes, if there is going to be any. So if, if the decision of the governing body tonight is to, in fact, to continue with a may election and to put this question on in front of the voters as part of the motion, you'll need to identify those key components. And then at the end, if that's approved, I'll read the relevant sections so that you'll be able to hear what the final language would look like for those, for those different sections. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. So I think it's important to set the context of what I'd like to to introduce as a package for my colleagues on the council, and this is based entirely on your feedback and input. The conversations that we've had at this table in terms of the needs of our community, the quality of life of our community, the incredible work that, that manager Ortega and his team, the Transportation and Mobility Department have done, the homework, all of the work that they've been giving, giving us as mayor and council. The engagement of our community in, in this conversation has been at the center of the, the option that I'd like for us to consider tonight. Move Tucson, the passage of Move Tucson and the thousands and thousands of people of Tucsonans that gave us their input in terms of what is important for them to improve their quality of life. And frankly, to make sure that that we are investing in infrastructure that will leverage private investment in our community. And that will help in terms of economic development and quality of life and mobility issues in our city. So saying that, the package that we have been discussing in terms of half-sent sales tax is the possibility of investing, of putting the initiative to the voters of investing in our neighborhood streets and collector streets. And uh it's, it's important to give that much more context. But um being able to extend that uh investment for the next ten years at half-cent sales tax, that will give us the opportunity to reach all of the neighborhood streets in the city of Tucson. That is super important uh to be able to make that investment uh in our community. And um twenty percent of those funds uh created would go to mobility uh and safety issues. In other words, uh making sure that we're also investment, investing in pedestrian and bicycle safety. We all have heard the stories that we hear far too often of bicyclists and pedestrians being killed in our streets. We need to make sure that we're creating a safe and complete streets in our city and uh the investment that that requires is part of our mobility future. The other piece that we have been discussing here at this table and with the city manager is the importance of investing in public safety and emergency services. It's important that we memorialize uh uh a s- investment for the next uh five years and into the future, investing in what Prop one-on-one frankly was investing in public safety. So apparatus replacement, vehicle replacement, equipment, technology to make sure that our police, firefighters and nine-one-one operators and dispatchers have what they need to provide the level of service, emergency services and safety services that our community deserves. And so we can memorialize and make part of this package through general fund allocation that we can memorialize in our truth and taxation policy. So um it's clear to us that, I mean, tonight we have to make sure that we make the um uh the language clear. Uh but what I'd like to do is invite Mister Ortega to talk about the package uh that uh he has been taking your input and feedback on to put this package for the voters together. So Mister Ortega, if you'd like to talk about um the, not just the language of the initiative, but uh the public safety portion, which is important to all of us. And then, of course, the uh funds so that we can also invest in collector streets in our city that are outside of the initiative language. Because it, like I said, this is a package of neighborhood streets, mobility and um safety enhancements as well as public safety and collector street investment, which is important to all of us. Start there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for the opportunity and, and thank you, council, uh really for bringing us forth. I think it shows tremendous leadership to be in a position like this. And this didn't happen overnight. This happened over the course of many, many years, including when we started on, on the Prop one-on-one. So some of you have asked me some questions and I'm gonna just uh go through them uh in some detail because I think the mayor's uh commentary, you know, sets the stage and the umbrella. So first of all, uh to public safety, uh public safety, I think, is, is uh not only an important part of our operations, uh but it's important to the community. And so I am, uh as, as I walked you through in my memorandums, I am comfortable committing general fund, fund balance uh for the purpose of investing in, in public safety. And public safety, the definition of that, quite frankly, is nine-one-one communications and then our traditional police and fire investments as well. The way that I would see this working is eighteen million dollars as a minimum uh over the, for each year over the next five years. Uh I believe that our fund balance uh allows for that. I will go over that in more detail with you as a part of the budget. But it suffices to say that, that based on my scrubbing of the data at this point, I am comfortable with making that recommendation. I would suggest that we not define that eighteen million dollars right this minute. I think that those needs for public safety and those three pots will ebb and flow over the next five years. But we want to definitely message and commit uh to that level of investment now. That's my suggestion and recommendation, Mayor. With regard to uh collectors, uh I had also mentioned that in my, in my previous uh communications to you, that there are some opportunities to utilize our HERF, Highway User Revenue Fund monies, uh specifically those, that capacity that is um after debt service is paid off. So keeping in mind that we are expecting the debt service to be paid off uh this year and next and freeing up capacity to the tune of about eleven million dollars. What I would suggest is that as a part of what resonates with not only you, but obviously with the residents, is the collectors need to be addressed. And so I would, I am very comfortable uh suggesting to you that we could commit to addressing collectors and uh doing it using HERF and some general fund. Keep in mind that collectors received a lot of money in Prop four-on-nine, Prop one-on-one, and to some level, the RTA on, on the arterial side. It is important that we continue to keep tho- that investment up. And so I would continue to, to recommend that we commit uh with that component as well. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you like, Mayor, but uh I am comfortable uh from a budget standpoint uh to be able to, to give you that confidence that we can move forward with both of those commitments now.
So what that commitment means is that um within the next five years, we would memorialize in our truth and taxation ordinance ninety-plus million dollars uh for public safety and emergency services within the next five years, which is very similar um to the Prop one-on-one investment. And with the, the hope and working together of continued investing after the, the next five years. So with, with that in mind and thinking about the package that we'd like to introduce for the initiative and the assurances that we want to do, I'm gonna read a motion for you all to consider and then, and then we'll open it up for um for discussion. So with that, I'd like to have council consider a motion that we pass and adopt ordinance number one-one-nine-zero-four, approving the ballot language for the extension of the existing sales tax to be submitted to the city voters on May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. The ballot language will use the following terms and provisions. One, the tax rate will stay at the same half-cent uh half-cent rate as previously approved by the city voters in twenty seventeen. The extension will be for a period of ten years. The revenues generated by the extension will be allocated as follows. Eighty percent will be dedicated to the restoration, repair, resurfacing and improvement of local neighborhood streets. Twenty percent will be dedicated to fund street safety improvements that benefit all users and modes such as bi- bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, including sidewalks, traffic signal technology and lighting. Additionally, I move that the mayor and council commit to the following actions to assure voters that the tax revenues will be expended for their approved purposes and not to be, to supplant other funding. By separate ordinance, the mayor and council will establish a truth and taxation policy, which will include the commitment of separate funding, including existing and available cash uh carry-forward funds in an amount not less than eighteen million annually for a period of five years for the purpose of funding vehicles, equipment and similar cause for our public safety functions in police, fire and communications. And by separate resolutions, the mayor and council will establish ongoing independent oversight and accountability of the administration and expenditure of the revenues generated by the extension of the half-cent sales tax. And by separate action, the mayor and council will can, will commit to ongoing funding for collector street improvements using separate funds, including HERF. If I may consider a motion for that.
Yes, Your Honor. Your Honor.
Yes.
So I'm, I'll second it. Can't understand what he's saying.
It sounds like there's a motion. It sounds like there's a motion and then there's, there's a motion.
Cunningham, yeah, it's seconded by Steve Kasachik, I believe.
So there's a motion.
Questions.
Right? What is, that what I heard?
Yeah, but I have some questions. Um yes, yes to your question, but um.
So um there's a motion in a second and I did see Councilmember Kasachik's hand up and I know that there's questions. It's a long motion, uh so I absolutely understand clarification. Go ahead, Councilmember Kasachik.
Okay, so for the purposes of Prop one-on-one, just to clarify, that's one piece of this and it is extending for ten years, half-cent sales tax, eighty percent residential streets, twenty percent for public safety roadway elements like speed humps and hawk lights and traffics, traffic uh signal, signalization, lighting and those kinds of things, just for example. The, the, we have a bond oversight committee that's in place right now and that is to keep them in place right now to continue the public oversight of this. That's a part of this as well? Didn't hear that. All right. Um just, just for clarification, you know, the RTA has not ever and will not take care of our residential streets. You know, these are our responsibility. And so that's the reason I think it's so important for this council to really stick with the, with, with the Prop one-on-one. It's, it's been successful. The, you know, we had a guy call the office today complaining that a crossing guard had stopped traffic to let a senior across the street in, in a, in a crosswalk. Really? You know, we're, we're killing too many people in this city and we've, we've endorsed Vision Zero. And I think that the addition of the public safety roadway elements and outside the curb line are gonna help us with with getting closer to that Vision Zero goal. We're nowhere near it yet. And so I think that that's an important pivot. So I guess for Mister Rankin, the it, it sounded as though there were three components to the motion. There was Prop one-on-one. And then I think you said twice, by separate action. There, there are budgetary commitments, but those have to be subject to our budgetary ability, right? So how do we, so maybe Rankin, Ortega, somebody explain that piece. I'm all in on the one-on-one stuff and the way we framed this. And so maybe if that's a separate motion, then that happens. But Mikes, talk about the, by separate action pieces of that. Cause I just don't understand how we commit to that without the budget in front of us.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll take a stab at answering that question. Yes, um you have uh framed uh the motion that has now been made and seconded uh quite well. There's the Prop one-on-one piece, we'll call it. Uh although on the ballot, it'll actually have a different number this time around. And um and you described that correctly in terms of the half-cent uh ten-years, eighty, twenty split that you've already described. The additional direction in the motion included bringing back a separate ordinance uh that would establish a truth and taxation policy, which is consistent with what the mayor and council did with one-on-one, did with four-on-nine and, and other measures that are uh sent to the voters uh to provide assurances that are truth and taxation, that the tax revenues will actually be expended for the purposes for which they were approved by the voters. And uh under the motion, the direction would be to include in that ordinance a commitment uh of the existing cash carry forward funds going forward for a period of five years for the amounts that the, the mayor described in, in uh suggesting the motion and which was made, which was the not less than eighteen million annually for that five-year period for the, the public safety related purposes that were described. Um and then so that mo- that ordinance would be brought back at uh, I would expect the February tw- uh twenty-third meeting or, or twenty-second, whatever the date is, uh for our next meeting for uh the mayor and council's approval. And then it would be embedded in the truth and taxation policy associated with this ballot measure. You are correct. Um budget measures are always subject to annual appropriation. But just as in other truth and taxation policies, it establishes the policies that um are the basis for putting the question in front of the voters.
Okay, so both pieces of the truth and taxation will be incorporated in the ballot language?
No, it will be included in the truth and taxation uh ordinance, not in the ballot language.
So what, what goes to the-
Exclusively with the half-cent sales tax.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Good, all right, because that would just confuse the voters. So what, what the voters are gonna see is we're gonna extend the half-cent sales tax, break it down eighty, twenty for ten years. It's public safety twenty, uh public safety roadway components twenty and eighty percent for road, uh residential roads and uh keep the bond oversight committee in place and boom, done. All right, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um Councilmember Cunningham and then Councilwoman Lee.
Yes, Your Honor, the way I understand it, and that's why I'm behind the motion, is that we're giving up uh we're gonna do, we're gonna basically keep the same sales tax rate we've had for the last five years. I mean, nothing's changing on the sales tax. And we're gonna basically repair every single residential road rage uh uh residential road and collector for the next ten years. We're also going to uh commit some ninety million dollars, eighteen million here for five years in the public safety. I think it's a great package and that's why I'm in support.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Lee and then Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Um similar to Councilmember Cunningham, I just want to um tip my hat to all of the work, the thought work that you all put into this um and to the staff. Because I know when we first started talking about this, my concerns were on how are we going to ensure that our public safety departments have what they need? And I just really want to share my gratitude for finding a way to make that happen, especially here on the east side, for us to be able to reassure the voters that we are fully aware of the needs, we understand the needs. It's a top priority for us and we found a way to make that happen and still address the number one also priority of getting the roads fixed. I think it's a huge um lift for us. I, I'm so proud of the team. So great work, everyone, and I'm super supportive and excited that we have arrived at, at this language today. So great work, everyone.
And you are included in that, that group of people that did this work, uh Councilwoman. So uh Councilmember Dahl and then Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am excited about supporting this package and kudos city manager and mayor and your teams for, for bringing us to this point. When I was campaigning, and it wasn't that long ago, probably the number one comment was the streets. And once you hear that every day, you see it every day. And it's, it's in the poor neighborhoods, it's in the rich neighborhoods, it's across the board. These streets are horrible and speak, speak, they don't represent the city very well. So it's great that we're taking care of that and I, I'm really glad to support that. I'm especially concerned, and this is just a little aside, the Bike Bowl Boulevard's get a special attention, that they need the best improvement because we want to keep people safe on their bikes and that's part of it. And Bike Boulevard's have both cars and bikes on them. Uh and if they, if they're well-maintained, people are, are safer. You know, um the twenty percent of safety is another great thing and um I don't want to steal Vice Mayor uh Santa Cruz's thunder, but I, I've observed what she did in, in her ward, um canvassing. And I know that, that the safety on the streets jumped up. And now that I'm receiving messages from my constituents, it jumps up for me all the time. People are very concerned and especially pedestrian crossings and bicycle lanes. Uh we need to make them safer in places where there's no sidewalks. So I'm, I'm glad to support the public safety part and I think our voters will as well. You know, you know, I'm the climate change guy and you know that transportation is an important aspect of us achieving, winning the war to fight climate change and to adapt to it, thirty percent of the and climate change works against transportation. I mean, hotter summers degrade our streets. Stronger storms with more stormwater degrade- Stronger storms with more stormwater degrade our streets. So, uh, the measures of safety that also include, uh, green infrastructure, I'm particularly interested in seeing how the city can combine that. When we make some of the safety devices, there where we can plant trees, et cetera. In my neighborhood, uh, Samos, which is the northwest quadrant, if I get it right, yes, northwest quadrant of Campbell and Grant, we had a lot of cut-through traffic, and we have South Point School and kids walking, so we needed to calm traffic down, and we did that. We put in circles, we put in chicanes, we put in islands. Um, we didn't do any new speed bumps, but it made things safer. The traffic circle near my house, within the first two weeks of it going in there, three cars went through a stop sign and crashed into the boulders we had there, and this is just an aside, two of them were stolen vehicles where the people jumped out and just ran away. So, um, I hope that the safety part includes traffic calming. I'm not sure if we need to include those words specifically, but traffic calming is, is one way to make us safe in, in a lot of different ways. So again, kudos. I'm looking forward to, to helping bring this to the voters and, and get this 10-year program passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahl, and Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, and City Manager Mike Ortega. I know, um, I, with these propositions, I always hate feeling like things feel rushed, um, and trying to herd cats along the way. So thank you for your patience and your diligence and being very intentional about it. I am, um, happy that we can, you know, come back to our, our neighbors in the city and say that, like, we've heard loud and clear, um, the demand for repaving neighborhood streets. And with that, um, their public safety concerns around, um, lighting and pedestrian infrastructure and street, you know, speeding mitigation factors like Councilmember Dahl just mentioned, um, and that we are, you know, putting together a robust program to address those needs in the next 10 years. So I'm super proud that we can go back and say to our neighbors, to our constituents, that in the next 10 years, yes, their neighborhood streets are on the queue for getting, um, for getting fixed. I think, you know, it's a huge win for, for all of us and, um, just thankful, you know, that we were all able to come together to make that happen.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Of course, go ahead, Councilmember Fumitas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, I agree with Kevin and the campaign. We heard nothing about fixing our streets, our roads that needed to happen. We need more public safety, et cetera, but I, I really applaud your efforts and my colleagues on the council doing this thing and making it forward happens. Because, you know, we had these ballot measures, we did 80% arterials, then 60% arterials, but really we left out residenials. And we got to fix those now, and I think I agree with, I like Mike Ortega's plan and like the things we're doing, but May is pretty quick, so we need to move on this really quickly, Madam Mayor. So I would like to see a plan coming forward on the potential, and I also, I trust our, our city council, our city clerk's office, because they did a yeoman's job in our elections, really been pushing this stuff, so. The special election in May, the council decides to hold it in May. What benefits will that have for us, Madam Mayor? I want to ask Roger that down the road, not now, because we want to put this on the ballot, and I agree 100% with you guys. And thank you for your efforts, and thank all the staff that worked on this.
Well, thank you so much. I, uh, really appreciate all the work that has been done by all of us. I want to stress a couple of things, uh, that the motion is very intentional in, in keeping the same half-cent sales tax, the extension would be for 10 years, because those 10 years will generate enough funds to cover all of the neighborhood streets in, in our city. That is very important for me, and I believe for you all, because we have to present a plan to the voters that is not a half plan or a half measure, uh, to take care of these neighborhood streets in our cities. So it covers all neighborhood streets within the city of Tucson in the next 10 years. And of course, as you all said, it has the safety components, which includes sidewalks and traffic signals and hog lights and, uh, features for, um, for slowing traffic and protecting our bicyclists and pedestrians. It is good for me to know that a, a child walking from their home with their parents to their school will be able to have a safe connection from their home to their school and back. And, um, and that's for everyone, the senior, um, that, um, Councilmember Kusatchik, or is it Councilmember Dahl talked about? Uh, it's, it's very important. We are seeing way too many deaths in, in our city, and so we have to do something about it. But part of the, of the package, as I intend, is to also memorialize the importance of our public safety departments and the investments that we need to continue doing in their apparatus, in their equipment, in their vehicles, in their technology, in order to serve our community the way that our citizens deserve. And then a, another piece of that, and this is aside from our ballot language, which is 80, 20, also the piece of making sure that we're committing to Collector Streets, which are streets like Glen and Mountain and, um, 12th Avenue, I mean, Drexel Avenue and other streets that are important pieces of our infrastructure that, um, not just residents, but those that come from, um, to visit us, experience the roads on, right? That's where we hear, oh, my God, we need to make sure that we're investing in this. So the package is pretty complete, and, um, it, it really looks at holistically at the needs of the residents of the city of Tucson. So I do see Mr. Ortega's hand up, and then if there are no other questions for clarification, we'll, we'll go for a vote. So Mr. Ortega.
Well, Mayor, I'm standing between you and a vote. I'll, I'll make it quick. How's that? So I just wanted to make sure, um, we, we used very deliberate language in these conversations, and I wanted to make sure that you picked up on it because sometimes they're used interchangeably, but for this purpose, it's important. Neighborhood street, uh, is all-inclusive in the neighborhoods, because we do have some neighborhoods where we have commercial. And so that would not be considered residential. That's why I'm suggesting that we focus on, excuse me, on, on neighborhood streets. That's an important nuance. So I just throw it out to you. Don't mean to complicate things. I just want you to know that's the level of thought. Also, uh, just kind of keeping in mind, as we start going down this path, particularly with the RTA, the arterials become of regional significance even more so. And so part of the discussion ongoing in the future is how we address the ongoing maintenance of those regional important streets as arterial. So, Mayor, I just wanted to point that out. And, and I'm glad to, to see the movement on, on that as well as what you all are discussing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the clarity. Mr. Rankin, did you want to clarify anything or before we go to a vote?
Yes, Mayor, at such time as you're ready to go to the vote, then I will go ahead and read through the different sections of the proposed language so that it's in the record as incorporating the direction from the motion.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Kusatchik, did you have any other questions or discussion?
More, more comments. I wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said. First of all, the last thing that Mike Ortega said. Uh, we are still, we voted earlier to, to stay at the table with the RTA. A part of that conversation is road repair on roads they have built. And they are, they are not going to fix our residential streets, nor should we be fixing their major arterials. So that's a part of the conversation, and I know some of them are probably listening to this for them to realize that's a big deal, and, and, you know, if they want us alongside them when this thing goes to the ballot, that needs to be a part of it, at least for me. Secondly, just for the people who are listening or who may read, let's put some numbers to this. We, we are committing $60 million a year for 10 years. That's $600 million to residential road repair. That's a big deal for this mayor and council. We're also committing $15 million, $150 million to safety elements. And we hear, I'm sure all of us, uh, in, in this meeting, hear all the time, we got people speeding through the neighborhood. We just, you know, we, we, it's not safe to ride my bike even down, for instance, Mountain, which is a Bike Boulevard, or a Treat or Third Avenue. So fix those, as Kevin said, and put protective elements. And so $150 million ain't jump change. That, that's the big deal, and, and finally, I just, I just think that this is really an important message for the, for the voters to understand that, you know, we all came to this thing with different priorities, and I think it's to the credit of everybody in this, involved in this meeting, council members, the mayor and staff, to say, you know, we, we've kicked this around. No one's violating open meetings laws, but we've, we've kicked it around between us, and this is really an important compromise. For some people, the public safety element was, was more key. For some people, the safety elements were more key. For some, it was just fix the damn roads. So we got it all in the package, and, um, and I, I know Mike Rankin is going to counsel us at some point. You can't go out and support or, support or, you know, speak for or against this once it gets to the ballot. But I think that the public is seeing a pretty, pretty universal, uh, I guess we'll see when we vote, pretty universal level of support for what we're talking about tonight among this mayor and council, and I hope that the public supports it on May 17.
All righty, Mr. Rankin, if you'd like to clarify the language so we can, uh, move forward with a vote.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and I apologize if this gets a little dry, but I'm, I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, but I'm just going to highlight the sections that, to incorporate the direction from the motion. So starting on page three of the ordinance, where it's the actual charter language, under section 3A of the charter, it will show that the ending date for the half-cent sales tax would move from June 30, 2022 to June 30, 2032. That's the 10-year period, uh, extension that you're authorizing. It would keep the language, uh, establishing the rate at the half cent, 0.5%, so that will not change. Under subsection A1, uh, in, that describes the street improvements that are authorized. It will, uh, describe that as the restoration, repair, resurfacing, and improvement of the condition of local neighborhood city streets, uh, including all necessary costs, uh, in connection therewith. Under subsection A2 relating to the safety improvements, uh, that will now read, "Street safety improvements, including but not limited to bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, sidewalks, traffic signal technology, and lighting." And just to answer a question that Councilmember Dahl raised earlier, the scope of that description includes, uh, the type of, uh, traffic calming and other measures that you described. So that would be captured there. With respect to the next section, subsection B of the charter language, it will now say that there shall be established a street improvements fund, which shall consist of, and this is where we had the blank, it will say 100% of all revenues collected from the tax described in subsection 3A. So in other words, 100% of the revenues will go into a street improvement fund. And then the next two subsections will describe that 80, 20 split. So subsection B1 will read that 80 cents of each dollar in the street improvement fund will be used for the local, uh, neighborhood street improvements. And subsection B2 will specify that 20 cents of each dollar in that fund will be used for the street safety improvements, including but not limited to the laundry list that I just read, bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, sidewalks, traffic signal, technology, and lighting. From that point, um, the, uh, there's, the, the former subsection C will be struck through. That will, uh, that was the section relating, uh, to the 60% split under the, the first five years of the tax, so that'll, that'll be shown as strike through, so the voters will see that. Uh, and the new, uh, the former subsection D will read as subsection C now, and again, we'll establish that end date of the extension as being June 30 of 2032. So that's the 10-year timeframe extension. The last subsection there is important, um, and it will read, as it does in your materials, that nothing in this section shall modify or affect the collection or expenditure of taxes authorized by the city's voters under Proposition 101, approved at the special election held on May 16, 2017. That language is in there for the purpose of making sure that the taxes that are captured within that first five-year period, as approved by the voters, will be allocated to the purposes and plans that were approved under that proposition. And what that does is help clarify that if this is approved by voters, that during the extension period, the new chemistry of the tax revenues will, will be in effect, but it won't affect what was already approved and, and authorized for expenditure under Prop 101. Corresponding changes will be made to the language in the materials that show the sample ballot and the official ballot. And I won't read all the way through that, but I will just, um, describe the, uh, how the official title will read. The official title of the proposition, which I'm expecting, uh, to correct from, uh, 101 to, I believe it will be Proposition 411 under the new numbering rules, so we'll make that correction. The official title will be proposing an amendment to the Tucson Charter, Chapter 4, Section 3, to authorize a 10-year extension of a temporary half-cent sales tax and dedicating the tax revenues to fund street improvements. Same changes both on the sample and official ballots. And then finally, it's, uh, one of the important features of, uh, the ballot language is the description of, uh, effect of a yes vote and the description of the effect of a no vote. So I'll just read how those will now read based on your direction. "A yes vote shall have the effect of authorizing an extension for a period of 10 years of a half-cent, 0.5% transaction privilege tax and use tax with the revenues dedicated to fund street improvements. A no vote shall have the effect of rejecting the pro- proposed extension of the temporary tax." One final thing, and this is not a change, but I just want to highlight it in the materials you already have. Section 6 of the, the ordinance, uh, refers to the fact that by separate, uh, re- uh, resolution, which actually I'm going to change to say by separate ordinance or resolution, the mayor and council shall establish the truth and taxation policy and shall provide for ongoing oversight relating to the expenditure of any tax revenues generated from the proposed charter amendment in order to ensure that the purposes for which the taxes are approved by voters will be the purposes for which those taxes shall be expended. Uh, and as part of the motion, the direction given to the, myself and to the city manager will be to bring back the described resolutions and ordinance, uh, to establish that truth and taxation policy as well as the ongoing independent, uh, oversight and accountability, uh, of the administration of this, uh, tax extension. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions on Rankin's explanation of what we're about to vote for?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one quick question. Sorry, I want to get this done, but I want to be thorough. This leaves the door open for the oversight on the, uh, on the complete street piece, um, where, uh, the complete street council, we can, we can, we can work that oversight after the fact. Is that how that's going to work?
Yeah, the oversight, we'll have an oversight for our streets investment. The oversight for, um, the safety components, uh, can be, um, discussed further.
Yeah, in other words, in other words, I just want to make sure that the complete streets coordinated council isn't frozen out. That's all.
Yeah, no, totally. With the, that's, uh, that's, those are logistics and details that we can make sure we bring, um, next meeting, whenever.
Perfect. That's it. I'm good, Your Honor. Let's, let's call the question.
All righty, uh, so, it, Kevin, Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Rankin, did you say it will be Prop 411?
That's my understanding, uh, Councilmember Dahl. There was a change in, uh, the statutes in terms of, that dictate how propositions are numbered. And so now it's sequential from the last local measure that was proposed, which in our instance was Proposition 410. Uh, so.
Well, I'll suggest we'll be able to say then, what's the 411? Every neighborhood street in Tucson will be improved.
There you go. Thank you, Councilmember. Um, so.
So we will now go to roll call with the motion. Everyone understands what the motion on the floor is. Mr. Clerk, please go to roll call.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Maro, Maro?
Aye. Ordinance number 11904 passes by a vote of 70. Congratulations all. This is going to be very, very exciting. Very happy. Looking forward to this. Item four?
Adjournment?
Counsel will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, February 8 at or after 5:30 PM. Congratulations all. I'm looking forward to this and informing the community the amazing opportunity we have. Mr. Ortega, you're standing between us and the adjournment. So go ahead.
I know that, mayor, but I couldn't resist. This is truly Roger's last meeting. So Roger, it's been a pleasure, brother, and we wish you well in your, your new chapter. Thank you very much.
Roger, thank you all so much for your hard work on this and have a wonderful rest of your week.